Good afternoon. I'd like to call this special call meeting of City Council on October 7th to order. Appreciate you guys being here and we're on our Electric City Television. Our invocation tonight will be given by Councilman Don Chapman in respect to Flats will be led by Councilman Buck Roberts. Please rise.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we give thanks for the many blessings that you give us each and every day. Be with our city's public safety personnel, both fire and police. We ask that you keep them safe as they serve and protect our community. As with this and every day, we give thanks and want to remember all the men and women past and present who protect us, this country, and our freedoms so that it is possible for us to gather here tonight. God is now as we conduct this meeting, may all we say and do, be mindful to our citizens, but most of all, be positive in your eyes. We ask this and all things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's no old business and we have one item, a new business, and that item is discussion of property reassessment millage for the city of Anderson and possible first reading of an ordinance regarding the same. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'll get to use this so I can use it over here. I know it's a little difficult to see, but we tried to blow it up for some of the people in the audience. Before I get started, I would like to thank, first from our staff, Peggy and Christie for working through all the reassessment numbers. This is a once in a five-year process. I'm not going to try to speak to state legislatures intent when they did it, but there are obviously some good things and they've made some changes that probably aren't so good. But I'd like to especially recognize Mike Freeman and Jackie Hunter from the county who worked closely with our finance staff in getting us to this point. I think what you'll find tonight for the city of Anderson is not overly complicated and again, it's a one-page chart and as we interpret it, you have three options. I think I've talked to a good many of you. I think I know where you're leaning and don't blame you. So I'm going to run through those options real quickly. If you have any questions, again, we told Jackie and Mike, they didn't have to come with any speech, but they could be available about the details of the process and as far as reassessment and whatnot, in particular, the city. If you would, on that chart, and again, for Art and the others, I apologize, I've blown it up about the best we can, what happens in this process? You look at the value of all the property in the city on 630 and you can see on that chart, the assessed value was 90 million 680 rounded off. After reassessment, the assessed value of those same properties was 90 million 098. So the assessed value, which is based on market value, actually dropped 581,730 dollars. In my 36 years now in this business, I've never seen assessed value go back. We've always enjoyed an economy, the assessed values were going up and this council was used to rolling millage back. What this means in the way of tax revenue, excuse me, had there not been reassessment, your tax revenue from that 90 million 680 would have been 11 million 335, assuming we collect 100% of it. With the new assessment, that same property will generate 11 million 262. So the actual revenues coming into the city on the same properties is $72,000 less. Now, real quickly, you have three options. The current millage is shown in option one, that's 125 mills. So that would be absolutely no tax increase, no millage increase. You'd have to make no change and let us know you desire to keep the millage at 125. Again, what that means is, on your revenue, just like we said, 11 million 262, that's $72,000 less. The good thing about the city for this past year, we've had growth and what growth would be is if a new house was built in an existing subdivision and that house was put on the tax books, then that's growth. Property that was already in the city, but something was built on it or property that was improved that would have increased the value. Okay, that's new properties or improvements that weren't on, not subject to the reassessment. You've also had, this year has been a special year in the way of annexations, including a couple on Clemson Boulevard and most recently, the Walmart and surrounding properties on 28. Those will generate 154,773. So if you leave the millage at 125, although you lose 72,000 on the property that was in the reassessment, you gain these two. So your total revenue would be 11 million 549,730. You can see that that will be a $214,000 increase to the general fund. Option two, law does allow where the existing properties go down in value, again, over the last 30 years, they've always gone up. Where they go down, you can roll the millage up. It has to be revenue neutral. So if you rolled it up, you would go to 126, which would offset the $72,000 loss only. That's why you see if you come on down, most of those numbers stay the same and you'll see there, the revenue would go up 304 versus 214. That's basically the 72 that you lost, you're getting it back by adding the one mill. The final one, and I don't want anybody to cringe, we're not recommending this one, but would be the law also says that between reassessments, you can use the CPI. So you can not only roll the millage up, you can add an inflation factor and you can see that that would generate 575,000. Just to kind of give you an idea and I'll close out, see if you have any questions. On the last, we looked at, I'll just do the, well, you see the three homes, a $50,000 home, 10200. Option one, this is the total tax bill from the city only. Be 250, 500, or 1,000. If you, so if you leave it, that's what people will pay and that should be depending on their assessed value. If their house didn't go up in value, then they're going to pay exactly what they paid last year. Option two, you can see that that would be some increase, 252, 504, and 1,008. So about $2 on a $50,000 house, 8 on 200. And then option three, 258 up to 132. Give you one last idea and then I'll see if there's any questions. Just a couple of notes that Peggy's provided for us. A mill in the city of Anderson is about $90,000. So those are your options and you'll need to choose one of those and we passed out an ordinance and we can plug in the millage you'd like to go forward with and get it adopted. We need to let the county know, we're actually holding them up a little bit, but when you do reassessment, things get squeezed pretty tightly and they'd like to have our millage. If we can do first reading tonight, we'll do second next Monday and they'll have it so the tax bills can go out. If you remember, the county does collect all of our real and personal property taxes for the city.
Any questions? Mr. Kirven?
John, on this chart, you have these two figures, growth and annexations. Can you explain, can you define the difference between those two, first of all, and then I have a follow-up on that?
Okay. And again, I'll ask Jackie and Mike if they want to help me. On growth, that would be property that was on the books, has always been in the city, but something new's been built on it. Or in some cases, it could have been remodeled and the value go up. In the case of annexation, and that's a great question, the Walmart, for example, even though it doesn't put a burden on our services, it is new properties and citizens and businesses that the city will be serving. Can I answer that adequately for you?
Yes, and then following up on that, the annexations, as a note says, these are properties that were annexed during 2013, but they won't show up on the tax books until 2014, which means that technically, we won't get that revenue until theoretically, January of 2015. So the coming year, wouldn't you have to reduce your figures on what our revenue will be by that annexation number? In other words, instead of 154 being added in, you leave that out and it's going, the change in revenue is going to be about $50,000.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Kirven. I think actually, you take the 154 out from annexations because they will not get on the books until December. Or they're on there now, they don't get recorded by the county and billed to the next fiscal year. So you have the 132 in growth, less the 72 in the dropping taxes on the assessed properties. So that does leave you actually 59,000, some odd change.
Now, the growth, that was all completed prior to January 1 of this year?
Yes, it would have been before, actually December 31 of 2012. Yes. Good question.
Would an example of growth be too, if a home has changed hands in regards to a new owner?
About the sale of a home.
That's an ATI, that would be one of the things that can take our equation.
What's an ATI?
Accessible transfer of interest. It goes on to fair market value in the year after the transfer. So if it had been kept at the previous reassessment.
It'll true up to the...
True up to the current market value.
All right.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned that the new, the new annexations, you said it would not be a burden to the city. Why is it not a burden to the city? Because these are outside of the areas that we normally have.
Good count, a good question again, Councilman Loughridge. There is some additional service, but in looking at any annexations by the city, we look at all the public works, police and fire, and determine the incremental burden on the city. I hate to call it a burden, but incremental service. And what we really put, when we define that is by annexing, we'll just use the properties on 28. Does that require an additional police zone? Does it require the construction of a new fire station? Does it require an additional garbage route or those kinds of things? In these cases, and before we bring those to you, we analyze all that by those divisions. And what we're saying is, there would be no additional police route. May require some configuration. There would, we can get to the, from this station out there in four minutes, which is your response goal. And since most of that is commercial, there's very little sanitation service required. So.
Okay, gotcha.
Again, if you string yourself out too far, and really what the city tries to do in looking at annexation opportunities, as we talked about in retreat, and then we'll take AD1, for example, you go out to the Sun Trust building, so we look at things inside. Once you start going much further than that, then you may have to look at additional services. So we're trying to economize and get some economies of scale on services you're already providing with the manpower and equipment that you have.
Mr. Chapman? I guess all these numbers relate to the current tax bills as they are now, if they're not adjusted for, I guess, people wanting a reassessment or a appeal. And, because I've gotten a number of calls from people that are saying they have similar type housing or, but there, but there's major discrepancies in what they're paying per square foot. So...
I had that same, I had that same question.
I wanted to defer that one for sure.
Well, and so, I would assume that some of those are going to be adjusted, which will adjust everything down the...
Well, I don't know, I can't promise the adjustment, but I'm sure that Mike and Jackie will get the appeals for those. Are you talking about like neighbors comparing their values of their homes?
Yeah, throughout, throughout my district anyway, the people are calling because where we, where I serve, there's a number of developments that are similar in architecture and similar in construction. So it's very easy for them to compare as opposed of some of the older neighborhoods that the houses are very unique and there's not really a identifiable square footage. So I think that's what makes it easier for them to compare. And then when there's a discrepancy with the square footage.
I don't know, Mike and Jackie, you want to address any of that?
Right, yeah. I mean, if somebody bought a house last year and it's right next door to somebody who had owned one for 10 years, it's probably going to be a discrepancy, even though the houses are virtually identical.
That was a flaw in the act, 388. That was a flaw in it.
06, 15% gap referendum that caused the problem.
That was a flaw.
Let me ask one question. Obviously, from the city's standpoint, the assessed value's pretty much even. What did you find countywide? Was it? Okay.
The people who got hurt this time were the people who had properties that were kept last reassessment. Because 388 was not for a boom, was not for a down economy. It was passed for a booming economy. And the economy is not booming. We've lost value. But those values haven't went low enough to keep from pulling those properties that were kept very low in 2008 when we implemented, up anywhere from 1 to 15%. Probably 60% of the properties that were kept are going up in value, in taxable value.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Loughridge? I've got an unusual situation in my neighborhood. It's an older neighborhood. We've got several older houses that have been, for one reason or another, people have died or either they've turned it over to the bank or whatever. They were resold and they were resold at a very low value, probably about a third of what the value of my house is. What does the county try to do about that? And are we going to see more and more and more of that kind of situation in the future?
If the property was taken over by the bank, it's probably considered foreclosure. We don't use foreclosure sales to determine fair market value.
What do you use for...
We'll look at what we determine arms-length transactions, the value of even those properties when we're putting them on the books. Now, if it was a good sale, if it's an arms-length transaction, then it might pull the other values down in that neighborhood. But if it had to do with the bank taking it, something like that, I would doubt very seriously.
One was an arms length and one was a banking transaction.
Foreclosure, short sales, those sorts.
Both of them were about one-half of the value of, one-half to even one-third of the value of the house.
I'll be glad to take a look at those if you hit with me after the meeting and try to give you a better answer.
Okay.
Any questions, Dr. Thompson?
Yes, I didn't know about this, but why does assessed value of a house go up if it's bought by another owner?
You asked people that passed that law that question. I tried, I stopped it, but the voters voted overwhelmingly to allow the legislature to change the constitution in the past, Act 388. That's part of the legislation in order to prevent the counties and the cities, the taxing entities, from losing so much revenue on property when it transferred too. So it just goes on to fair market value in the year after the transfer according to that legislation. That's why you can't compare properties in the neighborhood any longer. You can have identical, as Gillen said earlier, you can have identical properties sitting side by side in the neighborhood. One sold or transferred since the last reassessment, it's ongoing tax at a higher value than the one that had not transferred.
The whole idea of reassessment was not to have that, so that every five years, if you had houses in the neighborhood that were generally comparable, they would adjust so that everybody would be paying the same.
See, all of this, to me, points to the fact that using real estate as a source of taxation is fraught with problems because there's so much subjectiveness in the process, number one. Number two, you're using a balance sheet asset and then the taxes that's generated is an income item. So you're mixing balance sheet items with income items and it doesn't work. And that's why it's so frustrating to people that they have to deal with.
And the other thing is too, I mean, Mr. Freeman said, we thought the economy was going to keep growing and this whole thing was based on sales tax.
And it has not.
And it has not.
Well, I knew that the economy eventually, I've been living long enough to know that there's going to be a downturn in the economy at some point in time. I've lived through several of them. And that's why I didn't want to see the bill pass, because I knew what was going to happen. I didn't expect it to happen this quick, but this was going to happen at some point in time. And those people that the law was passed to protect were going to end up...
So tonight, we're just basically by statute, we've got a couple of lodges.
Set a millage. And, you know, again, Mr. Mayor, you're going to have in that 90 million, some people have gone up, some have actually come down. And so if you, for example, if you set the millage at 125, the residential property owners whose value went down, they will actually pay a little bit less in their tax bill to the city. Now, I can't, I can't speak for what, you know, the tax bill, there's a lot of other things like EMS and the school district and those, but their city tax bill could decrease or if the values went up, it could increase based on the 125. So there'll be, but overall, the revenue to the city under 72,000 is pretty much neutral.
So your team's recommendation is option one?
One or two, whichever you prefer.
One or two. And we have, first reading, we do have opportunity to have a discussion in 20 seconds.
What, is one or two? My recommendation?
Yeah, it is first name.
Nobody's going to vote for number three.
Well...
Put it on the table.
Wait a second, Buzz, Buzz's got a voice.
I've had, not many, but several people call me and say, look, mine went up more than 15%.
They need to fail. I don't believe that.
Well, that's what they said. I didn't see their tax...
If it's transferred, it may well have.
If they've sold it or transferred the property.
If it transferred, it didn't transfer, it shouldn't have went up more than 15%.
Gotcha. So when it transfers, it's when it transfers. That's when they get you.
If somebody feels that that's catty, so they should certainly ask about it.
I'll find out. I'll tell them to call you.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second that motion.
What's the motion?
We have a, we have two options that we need to talk about.
Well, probably given the confusion, option one is what we'd recommend.
Right.
We'll be fine with that as a city. Yeah, if you don't, if you, if you want to leave it at 125, then your ordinance is our, when you pass the budget was set at 125 and so you'll be done. I don't think they have to redo it, Frankie. Their budget ordinance said 125 mills.
Mayor? Mr. Mayor, we have a question from the audience.
Can we, can citizens talk?
Sure.
Certainly.
Thank you.
It is an item on our agenda, item, Art?
First of all, as a close observer of city government, I am so thankful for what the city have done over the years. You have been accountable. You invested our money very wisely and I can see the results everywhere I go. In the future, the city is going to face greater challenges than ever. The federal government is trying to balance its budget at the expense of local government. The state government is trying to balance its budget at the expense of local government. Sooner or later, you will need to invest more money in our infrastructure, our roads, our bridges, our transit system, because it is up to us in the local community to take care of it. So let us not follow the popular thoughts of lower taxes and smaller government at the expense of our future. I hope that you will have the political courage to choose option three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Art.
In other comments from the audience?
I have one. I have been called by several people and these are people who are on fixed incomes. And they've asked me to simply say that we don't need a tax increase. They are not, they're very concerned about paying the taxes they've got, keeping up their house, paying the federal state income taxes, all the other mess that goes along with it. And they're very concerned about local taxes as well. In that respect, I would like to make a motion that we, we go with option one, which is 125 mills with no change.
First by Mr. Loughridge.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Discussion?
I have.
Mr. Chapman?
I just wanted to say that I think that the city certainly, as Art has pointed out, that we do our due diligence in making sure that we, we use our, our tax dollars wisely. And it seems like if we, if we learn to work with less, in this past couple of years, we've seen that we actually can do as much with less as we were accustomed doing with more. So, you know, and that's one of the reasons why I think there's such a slight, a slight difference between one and two, that, you know, to keep it at no change would be appropriate. So.
Ann, can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
Mr. Collins, we appreciate your comment. It's one of those things that, that we wish we had more input from more people in the community. This is something that I've thought about a long time. This is something that I, I really do believe that locally, people get more bang for their buck on local taxation than they do any other type of taxation. If you listen to what the federal government wastes daily, what we could do with that is just unbelievable. But that's not the case. They have the money and, and we have to pay the money through, to the federal government. I wish there was a way that I could say to you that I wish we could go ahead and, and increase it to 129 mills or even 135 mills. But it's not one of those things that I feel like we can do at this particular time with this down economy, with a lot of people suffering. And I mean, a lot of people are suffering. You don't hear about it, but I hear about it. People call me and talk to me about finding jobs even. It's, it's not something that's just not available. It's just not there. So that's why I'm voting the way I'm voting. That's why I'm recommending we vote the way we vote.
I got a comment.
Perfect.
I agree with what's been said, but I would also like to say that, you know, to me, in growing our revenue at the city level, the easy way out is to increase taxes. And nobody wants to do that generally. The better way to do it is to enhance the growth factors, enhance the annexation factors where you can, and get all the efficiencies you can get out of what we're doing now. And that means, you know, doing... that means, you know, doing more with less in some situations, and doing without some things that maybe are not effective. And there's nothing wrong with abandoning some, some realm that we deal in if it's no longer effective. The bottom line is, until we do all those things, then I think we ought, the tax increase should be the last resort, and I think most of us feel the same way.
Mr. Roberts?
I've been on council thirteen years now, and I think we've balanced our budget every year I've been on. I can't remember a year that we didn't balance that budget. Do you know of one, John?
No.
Peg? So I think we, I'm like Art, I think we do a good job at what we do. We've got a good staff. That makes a difference.
That makes a difference.
My comments are, I, I agree with the general tone of council, but I, but I also say, and I hope I'm kind of paraphrasing what Art is saying, I, I don't think we can stick our hand, head in the sand and not ever look at other options. Now, we have the good fortune of being in the part of the country where we've grown, where people have come here. We are hamstrung by annexation, as Mr. Curvin, we've had some, but we cannot, when we think that, that we've got an area of our city, or our county, where we can say, we think we can service that with, with police fire, and you're in the city, we can't annex like Georgia and North Carolina, so we have to be very smart. But I do think it comes to a point where, and this, this council, over the years, has been, and John and his team have been very good at being efficient, but it comes to a point where unless we create jobs and create growth, efficiencies won't save us. Now, I think one of the biggest things that, that might be a job killer in this community is infrastructure. I mean, and, and, you know, roads and bridges, and, and companies that are coming in, they have to have, have solid infrastructure. So I think that's key, too. But we have a first and a second, we've had discussion. All those in favor, Si?
Yeah.
Opposed? That passes unanimously on the first reading.
Mayor, council, thank you, I thank Mike and Jackie for coming. If I might, just make one other comment, this will not be on the next agenda, because this, this motion and passes will...
Be on the end of the month?
That means it's gonna be at one-twenty-five, so that you don't, there'll be no ordinance. The ordinance that you have in place stands. I would say this, too, and I appreciate all the nice comments on the finances and whatnot, and this organization, and especially Peggy and, and the city manager's office have had a philosophy that really, in the heat of the budget, is not a time to make fast decisions. And so what we'll be doing now, while there's no pressure on you, in November and December and probably into January, as we promised in the retreat, we'll be looking at those efficiencies, we'll be looking at some issues, and spending a lot more time on the finances than we do in those, that month leading up to your budget. That's the best time to look at it. Again, you're not under the gun to get it done for an ordinance for a budget, and we can get a little bit more in-depth of where we are. But one of the beauties about this council, I mean, we've not run this city or the improvements on taxes, not property taxes, they've been done on some special revenues which come from people that surround us. The Georgia, outside city residents, like hospitality fees, and, and those kind of things, have really pushed the city forward on its capital projects program, recreation downtown, and so we'll continue to look at those opportunities. We always say, this is a city of thirty thousand, but on any given day, there's a hundred thousand people that we have to serve, so those are great opportunities. Thank you.
Can I say one other thing?
Yes, sir.
This is one of those things that's not, you know, lightly decided, I mean, by all the members of this council. I think it's one of those things that each one of us has to look in their heart and see whether or not it's something that we want to do as far as raise taxes. But I think we need to, you know, taxes should be raised only when it's necessary, and I think that's a key to remember any time, any time taxes are, are increased. There may be a time in the future, Art, that we need to raise taxes, and this, this is something that I've made clear to my constituents, that if you need to raise taxes, I will let you know, a way ahead of time. And I think what John says is a great, great idea. If we need to make some improvements, if we need to raise taxes, we need to do it at a different time where there's not the pressure of this kind of thing on us, so. That's all I have to say.
Good. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
To move. First by Mr. Roberts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. All those in favor, Si?
Uh.
Opposed? Stand adjourned.